Ms. Toob, would you call the roll, please?
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Dave Burris.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all. It is all liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, remember conflict of interest issues. If you have something that need to bring to the council's attention prior to vote, please let them know that. I'd also like to remind everyone that our microphones are much better than they were before, but we still have some situations where we're not close enough to them that sometimes the audience can't hear us. So just pretend it's karaoke night, get up and close personal with your mic and let the audience hear what you have to say. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. I would like to move executive session up just before personnel actions and add... Am I okay?
Got you.
All right. And add SDCL 1-25-21 personnel. So we'll have two reasons for going into executive session. First one would be personnel, second one would be legal, and we'll move the executive session up to just before personnel.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda, moving the executive session to just before personnel, including SDCL 1-25-2-2 personnel and South Dakota Codified Law 1-25, 25-23 legal.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the December 5th council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
December 5th council meeting?
Second.
You got boxed out, Linda.
Yeah.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $288,449.10.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $103,586.61.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I got a question on page seven. Well, it's throughout the whole thing, most of it's on page seven. And I know I'm harping on, and I'm sorry about this. Police Department spent $2,186.186.61 on clothes. I can see the body armor, because somebody has to have that. I know our chief was going to look at the old clothes we have and try to...
Craig, you said on page seven?
Yeah, page seven. Well, the whole amount through a whole thing, but most of it's on page seven. With body armor.
Where's that?
Boots, pants, shirts.
I'm just not seeing a total amount of...
I added them all up there throughout the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
I think on page seven, it's Lakota.
Complete...
Lakota contracting.
Okay.
But I asked Misty about this and come to find out some from last year, that some wasn't paid last year. So does... And I asked my wife, excuse me for saying this, but when she was there...
Excuse me.
All the bills went to City Hall. They still do that. Evidently must not, because this is never paid. And I know J.R. and Jeff was going to go over the clothes allotment for the City of Hot Springs. Are we still going to do that? Are we done?
No, it's still in progress, Craig.
I pulled paperwork on it, and we're getting ready to sit down. Sorry, excuse me. No, not yet.
I mean, this is quite a bit for the end of the year. I suppose nobody else has anything they want to say about it. I guess that's all I have to say.
I guess the only thing I'd say is it's a clothing budget. The officers are... The current allotment is $600 a year per officer. I believe the expenditures are within that budgeted line item. The two... There were two, as you brought up, two expenditures that were actually 2021 purchases that the police department didn't even... The current police department didn't even know about until this past month. So that was a flyer.
I would add, although we do request invoices mailed to City Hall, that many vendors are now emailing. We do our best to keep up with them, but things do fall through the cracks, so...
I agree, they have clothing allotment, but I just can't see them wearing out clothes in a year.
Well, you also have to remember that we have a very new police department.
I know that, I agree.
And so this is one of those times, Craig, that I don't think we need to be micromanaging the police department or any other department, because they are purchasing a line item budget that is within their budget, and let them do their business.
I'm not micromanaging the police department. I'm just saying that every department, I can see if they worked out, like in the ditches, on the roads and stuff, maybe might wear up clothes. I cannot see $600 for wearing our clothes in the police department. I know Jeff and J.R.'s going over this.
If the policy changes, let's have this discussion at that time.
Which we talked about at the Admin Finance Committee meetings.
But that... Was that just... That wasn't just one person, though, right? That was...
I'm sorry?
Was that just one person? No, that total of eight, 17, was that just one person or...
It was, but that included the bulletproof vest, which...
The vest is a different... That's actually equipment versus clothing.
And the reason I brought this up, the chief told me personally that he went through all those old clothes and was going to try to issue them out before they bought new. That's why I brought it up.
Bill. Okay, and if he said he was going to do that, he's probably done that, and these were then necessary purchases.
Anyone else?
The clothing issue that we're working on, it's all departments in the city. It's not just the police department, and we'll be looking at it pretty much in depth. We're always seeing clothing on just about every council meeting, if somebody's buying clothing, and we just need to get a handhold on it and have a look, see what everybody's doing. I have full confidence the chief has gone through the clothing that he has or that they have in that department and is therefore purchasing anything that's necessary that he may not have or may not fit a current officer that we have under our employ.
One of the reasons I brought this up, because we had a complaint today from employees about different clothing allotments, so...
Did they have recommendations? Because that might be helpful to bring to the committee that we're discussing it in.
I think they're the lowest ones on totem pole, so yeah, they want more money, you know.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Communications from the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? We have a full house, there's got to be somebody out there. All right. Council updates. Our first one is our Public Works Engineer, Tracy.
I don't think he's here.
I think we've got a disconnect here, Mayor. We're going to pull that one off. Tracy is scheduled to be here in two weeks to brief council, and we may have messed up the schedule on that one.
And then Item B, as you know, Kathy is dealing with some family medical issues.
Is Kathy here?
Kathy's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Is she back there?
She's here, in the dark.
Okay, disregard the sparky.
If you could fill in for Tracy also, Kathy, that would be helpful.
Oh, Kathy. That was a good try, though.
Kathy? Since you can give an update, can I mark you off on my list here?
Um, thank you.
Good so far.
Right. Not having a building, I think in the last few weeks, I've done a series of thank yous on Facebook. That seems the best way to do it, because there's so much help from so many places. I know I've been really stubborn, and I really appreciate the opportunity to evolve recreation this year, to see what would happen through Four Seasons. I know that's kind of been a pain in the neck for some, and definitely extra work for everyone, including me, but it's really been cool. And I know, I don't know, you know, I know things are pretty stressful for the city right now, but thank you, because last year, when budget things were going on and it was awkward and I was frustrated, because I felt the program could grow further, and it did. Some... You guys gave us the opportunity to do that, so I appreciate it. So, everybody's got sheets, it's pretty much all there. I didn't break down cost per participant. By the way, these mics are really sound.
They're hot.
I know there's a lot of focus on things that are contrast, for a diplomatic word. I'd like to also point out that our revenue was much different than what was shown, and we did take in almost 400 in free will donations towards general revenue, so from the open gym.
You mean projected, not what was shown?
Projected.
Because what was shown is actual.
On the projected budget, these are numbers that Misty has been extremely patient with, because we haven't been able to give exact numbers since 2019, when we were changed from summer rec to year round, and you guys allowed there to be some growth. It was very hard to give hard numbers of what would happen. And so while there's been a lot of contrast and a lot of challenges with the budget, I'd like to point out some good stuff, too, that the people have shown that they have supported these programs. And thank you taxpayers. I mean, I'm a taxpayer. I love seeing these numbers, so that's it. Can I go?
I guess the encouraging thing for me, Kathy, is that the numbers for the programs seem to be consistent and growing a little bit. I guess, is it proper to assume that if, like, something like summer flag football, if it hasn't been happening for a couple years, will that go away?
So, pretty much what I do is if, or what I did, if people came forward and said, "I'd like to do this," as long as the minimum number requirement was met and the numbers crunched out, if, you know, like if they needed supplies or something, there had to be, you know, we do have a model that we follow, then we would do it.
Okay.
The school started another football program, and so their own. It's kind of like a, I don't know, a traveling team, I think is what they call it. And so that is very popular and very successful, from what I understand. There's a lot of passion around that. So I don't see flag football not being here as a detriment, because it is happening within the schools.
Okay, great, thanks.
Oh, the other one thing I wanted to add, I always use my own vehicle, and I have to say thank you to Jeff this year for, and you guys for...
I mean, a clown mobile?
Approving... I am not going to count that as a clown mobile. A van is a perfect vehicle to haul this stuff. And to me, that made the position much more sustainable than using my own vehicle with, especially gas prices this year. So that's another big thank you. That was a big goal for me, to try to make the position more sustainable, so, yeah, thank you for the support of that.
Thank you for all your hard work. You put a lot in all times of the day.
You know, it's been a royal pain in the rear, and it's been a load of fun, so there's quite a balance for me. Thank you.
You've brought a lot of change and a lot of diversity to it.
Are you done updating?
Done.
Oh, you're not. I need to publicly thank you. For those of you who don't know, Kathy has rendered her resignation effective the end of December, after what, six years, Kathy, I think? So I need to personally thank you. As an Old Parks Recreation guy, you've done a great job, and I've been very impressed with what you do with limited resources here, so I want to thank you on behalf of everybody.
What's the effective date?
30.
The 30th.
We'll get that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Are you leaving our fun community?
Oh, no. Nobody knows you're deaf, because it wasn't from your...
I know, because it just happened.
No, I have some family illness.
Well, I think not just the council, but I think the whole community will miss you.
Yes, definitely.
You know, if you'd consider sticking around, we could maybe upgrade you to a yellow pickup.
I like trucks, but we'd have to, like, put something over the bed for when it's raining, you know, those couple times of summer.
Yeah, that van worked perfectly for you.
It really did. I know everybody... It really added a lot of PR.
Not good, but it adds some PR.
Especially once you put the City of Hot Springs Recreation...
I loved it. It was the perfect vehicle, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy? It's interesting looking at your numbers, you know, pre-COVID. 2022 far succeeded any of your pre-COVID numbers, so thank you for that. It's obvious you were growing the programs. Your overall total is what I was looking at. You know, pre-COVID was 563, 591, 637, and then 2021, 576, and 2022 is 690. And those... Everybody recognizes the lot of the hours that you donated that you shouldn't have?
You know, there's that word, "shouldn't," and, you know, I did do the Facebook stuff free this year, because that was for me, and you guys had already approved more time, and I felt that was a great platform to say thank you to all the different groups. But thank you for what you're saying, and that's really the community. There's a lot of people that keep standing up and saying, "Hey, I want this, I want to try this," so that's a thank you for noticing that.
And I wish you the best with what's prompted your resignation.
I appreciate it.
There's good outcomes from that, so good luck, and it's good to hear that you'll still be around.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll be back.
All right. Thank you.
So we have potential to suck her back in someday.
I didn't say that. I'll be back. I heard it, I had it in the minutes.
That's right, it's in the minutes now. Can't change it.
All right, so you approved an amended agenda. The next item would be executive session, so if I could get a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-2 personnel and 1-25-2-3 legal. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Garland, Misty, Jeff, Ariel.
Starting preservation.
All right. Misty, do you have us back?
Yes, I do.
And no one left running executive session.
Did you tell me about that?
Okay. That takes us to personnel. Jeff had just asked on personnel, Item A, if we can make the effective date 12/20/22 on that one. So I would ask that you make a motion to approve personnel actions A through C with Item A, the effective date being 12/20/2022.
Make a motion to approve personnel actions, Item A through C, with Item A being effective 12/20/22. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to ordinance, our first... Ordinance A, first reading of ordinance 1245. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1245, an ordinance transferring four lots in the Boulder Falls addition from rural service district to urban service district.
Second.
I said it for a lot.
I got you.
Discussions. Roll call. Ms. Toob, would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Melanie Wilson.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Dave Burris.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto our resolutions. First Resolution A, Resolution 2022-26, a contingency transfer resolution.
Make a motion to approve 2022-26 contingency transfer resolution. Second.
Discussion.
Question for you, Misty. Did you talk to the airport manager today?
This includes an additional $1,000 from what we originally budgeted of 2,000, and this should cover his added expenses.
Okay.
I'm sorry I didn't get the second. I know it was right over here. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What was that, the $1,000 for?
The additional hangar door repairs, or hangar...
The replacing or repairing the hydraulic actuators on the city hangar door.
You approved up to 2,000 in a previous meeting. This has 3,000 for the project.
Once they got it disassembled, they found some additional damage to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next resolution, Item B, Resolution 2022-27.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-27, Resolution to surplus city property, the Southern Hills Golf Course log pile.
Second.
Discussion. Really enjoy the enthusiasm tonight with the motions. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution C, Resolution 2022-28, Resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
I make a motion to approve 2022-28 Resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Jeff, I know you spent a lot of time on this. I'm confident that Misty was helping with that in every department head and the ladies out front, so I appreciate all of that. Anything you want to share with the council on changes?
I'm sorry, Bob, I couldn't hear the question.
Is there anything you want to share with council about the changes?
No, no, I think 90% of this work is golf course, and a lot of these price changes and updates, in fact, some of them are reductions, but they're based on... A lot of it is based on new point of sale, that we're trying to work... It's really a restructure of the entire pricing fee structure, or re... Anyway, never mind, redundant, but that's what it is. So other than that, it's primarily golf course. The other ones are, I won't say minor, but they're just small changes.
Are these price increases, like, trying to keep up with Rapid City, or are we trying to stay down?
No, no, we're trying to stay competitive. We are still, and I don't have the spreadsheet with me, but we're still majorly, for lack of a better word, competitive, underpricing other courses.
Any other questions?
We'll just offer to the council that regarding the changes to the airport hangar rates, those rates were discussed at the Airport Advisory Committee on August 4th, and the committee concurred with what you have before you. And the fuel price change that's listed in this document also, the Airport Advisory Committee was surveyed via email, and they concur with that change also.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to new business. New business, Item A, a possible motion and discussion to revise the 2023 municipal tax levy.
I'll make a motion to revise the 2023 municipal tax levy from $1,295,000 to $1,313,754 due to an error in the county growth calculation, which was originally reported by Fall River DOE, no, FRC, Fall River County, DOE as 0.21%, and was actually 1.86%.
Second.
Discussion. So Misty has included the emails that go along with this, with the county, and she also provided you a copy of Codified Law 9-19-13. Misty, would you like to talk about that?
We need the motion and the concurrence to reference the codified law that I copied, declaring this an emergency and determining that it can be effective immediately, and the county needs that in order to enter the levy for the calculations for taxes next year. So I have the motion by Johnston, second by Lukens. Would you amend your motion to include that in conjunction with Codified Law 9-19-13, the effective date will be immediately for emergency purposes?
Yes, I'll make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item B, a possible motion and discussion to approve change order number two.
I make a motion for discussion to approve change order number two on the complete concrete contract for the suspended sidewalk project, number NH038500, PCN07W3. This change order will increase the total contract cost by $436.80 to the new contract toll of $3,926... Wait, $3,920... Wait, one more time.
Second.
Discussion.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Tracy has his explanation along with the change order, and I guess we're not... Of the taxes we're exempt from, we're not exempt from excise tax, and that wasn't included on the original invoice. This will take care of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item C, possible motion and discussion to approve a $200 bonus.
I make a motion... I make a motion to approve a $200 bonus for the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs lifeguards, front desk, and custodial staff for the 2023 calendar year. In order to qualify, an employee must work a total of 300 hours in the dedicated position half scheduled over the 10-week peak season, being between May 1st and August 31st.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a problem with this. It first started as giving it to lifeguards because they had to be certified and life-saving and everything. Now we got every employee down to Evans Plunge getting a bonus if they stay there. What about the other employees that stayed at the city all summer long? This isn't right.
What I was thinking is that this probably excludes a lot of the seasonal employees if they can't start work on May 1st and stay till August 31st, such as students, high school students and college students. So this will exclude a lot of her employees.
Yeah, I don't care about that. It just isn't right to the employees at City Hot Springs where one entity gets a bonus for doing their job and nobody else is.
Well, here again, it's an issue of retention. There's been a problem with retaining people at the Evans Plunge for the peak season.
Giving them a bonus is going to help.
I think giving them a bonus will probably create a hostile work environment.
I do too, but you know.
Let me point out, I disagree, Craig, with you, but let me do, point out that this is, this budget, and I don't, I do advocate for this, but I will say this bonus was part of the '22 budget, and you approved it for '23 as well. We discussed this at the budget roundtable. So I just mentioned that because it's, it has been, I don't know how many years it's gone on, but it has been a standard.
I voted no last year.
Yeah, okay.
I think that part of the purpose was to keep the folks there through the shoulder season, and it also, my understanding, it keeps the doors of the plunge open, which is an enterprise fund, so that we can maintain the revenue stream and also the satisfaction of the community, especially the local folks that want to use this facility on a routine basis. And that's the whole goal. The plunge, I believe, is different than the rest of the city departments. It is an enterprise fund. If we don't have the lifeguards, if we don't have the front-end people, we can't keep it open. If we can't keep it open, we lose our revenue. If we lose our revenue, then we don't get to reject the subsidy that we typically, or at least have to budget for that facility. So it's not trying to treat them special, it's trying to maintain the facility and keep the doors open. That's why we originally did it.
That's why we did it.
The golf course is the same thing as this. Why give them golf course?
Because the golf course hasn't had the problem.
And the golf course doesn't have to operate year-round and have the incentive to keep these kids, you know, there.
Any of you guys been teenagers and be a lifeguard?
I was never a teenager.
I did it, and I can understand, sitting in that chair that long, you just don't make it that long. So I don't think $200 will keep them there, and I just, I just think that's wrong.
And I understand that. The feedback we got at least the first year or two is that it did keep some of the lifeguards there. They were appreciative of it, they were willing to stick around when they could have left at the end of the season. So it accomplished, at least to my understanding, what we set out to do.
Yep, now we're giving the janitors a bonus to stay there too. Come on.
How many lifeguards we got on station unit right now, Jeff?
I don't know what the number is. I think it's six or seven. Linda, do you know?
I'm not real sure on the number because it fluctuates.
I think it's, I think it's six right now.
And last year? Do you have those numbers?
It does fluctuate. They'd like to have more. They're still hiring.
Well, you know, I mean, in the past.
Last year you didn't approve it.
In the past, we've had a problem with trying to get them trained, we're trying to get them to schooling, all this stuff. Now we want to give them $200. I mean, yes, I understand everything that's being said positive, but I'm also, you know, want to look at it in a negative way too. We got people that were trained to do this, okay. Well, some are still no longer there.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, it is, if they don't stick around, if they don't work the hours, if they're not there by May 1st, if they're not there at August 31st, you haven't spent the money.
That's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring to individuals that were here last year that got qualified, that did do the hours, now they're not here.
Well, I appreciate that, but this, this is meant as an incentive to try to keep people for that particular summer season. It's not a, an attempt to solve the overall retention problem at the plunge.
Yeah, but we're trying to make all the departments get along and then we put a wedge like this between all of them. You don't think this is going to upset some of the other employees in the City Hot Springs?
We've been doing it for three years now.
And you don't think it upset them? Talk to them once.
It did come up.
It is an ongoing problem. The reality is, we're darned if we do and we're darned if we don't, so.
We've got a business to run, and we've got to make some hard decisions on how to run that.
And the point that's been made is this was originally implemented as a retention tool, and it wasn't that long ago that we didn't have the staff available to keep the facility open seven days a week. We were down to five days a week, and we were being criticized for not having it open those two particular days. So it is a retention tool, and it has worked. Has it retained 100% of the people that were eligible for it? No, but it has been working.
And I want to add one thing, not to beat this to death, but we started out the year closed two days a week. We're now down to one day a week. That was my task to Chris to make that happen. She did it barely, and she barely had enough people to cover, but they survived it. So my point being, they busted their behinds to make that work. And, you know, yes, it's a retention issue, but anyway, the overriding thing for me is this is an enterprise operation, and we have to take care of our staff there. I don't disagree, Craig, with what you're saying, but we need to budget that. If we're going to do that, we need to move forward. Firstly, we should have an incentive program for the entire city, but.
And if we pass, if we passed a budget that included this in that, I don't think it's appropriate that we change our mind on what we're budgeted for.
I do if you don't believe in it.
Well, you, you don't have to vote for it, but I'm just saying, we've got, we ought to live by some principles here.
Yeah, we should. Think of the other employees in the city.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I was just kind of looking at it as like a signing bonus, not a signing bonus, but as a protection, it was like the nurses. I mean, the nurses, we were having, you know, during COVID, we're having a hard time, and maybe this is, you know, you know, a good way for the kids to get that, you know?
And it is budgeted for 2023.
It is budgeted, so.
Yes.
You may have discussed it at budget time, but if you remember during the budget session, we reduced the salaries and wages that Evans Plunge requested by almost $300,000. I can tell you historically, this has never amounted to more than about $1,400 to $1,500 in a salaries and wages expense.
And that comes out of their.
Comes out of salaries and wages at the plunge.
Yeah. Yeah. I was on my hospital vacation.
All right. Anyone else? Say that again, Misty.
When you approve, when we discussed the projected salaries and wages for Evans Plunge for 2023, you reduced that projected amount by, I'm sorry, I can't totally remember, but by almost $300,000, I believe, because they typically can't fill their staffing needs. So although you may have discussed this, there was not a line item or an addition to salaries and wages. It was actually decreased from what was originally projected to balance their budget, but it's never amounted to very much of an expense that gets paid out of salaries and wages.
So is that your way of saying that we did not actually vote on this?
You don't vote in budget anyway. You just talk about.
The overall labor amount was dropped. It had nothing to do with, but that's.
It didn't have to do with this. It was, this topic was discussed, but you didn't vote to approve or disapprove, and the amount of salaries and wages.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it was not a vote.
Okay, so, that being said, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Thought you might ask me to do that. Larry Pratt.
No.
Craig Romi.
No.
Linda Varvel.
No.
Melanie Wilson.
Yes.
Oops, that's not why. David Burris.
No.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
You have a tie vote, Mayor.
America, break a vote to spend money. But don't pass.
So that is my question to you. This is an expenditure.
You have a state attorney right there.
Okay. All right.
So then what do we do?
It does not pass, it fails to pass.
All right. The motion fails. New business, item D, a possible motion discussion to approve 2023 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment.
I make a motion to approve 2023 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment of leased site for billboard located south of Maverick Junction on US Highway 18385 with Gary and Sharon Romi.
Second.
Discussion. Now, this comes in front of you every year. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Are you comfortable explaining why you abstain?
Because it's my cousin.
Okay.
Same last name.
If you remember, the guidance was where you feel it's appropriate.
Appropriate.
Let the council know why you're abstaining on a particular vote. All right. New business, so the motion passes, correct?
Yes.
All right. New business, item E, a possible motion discussion to approve 2023 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment.
I'll make a motion to approve 2023 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment of leased site for billboard located south of Minnacada Junction on US Highway 18 with Scott Phillips.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. So this is the same as the previous one? These are yearly assignments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F, this is discussion only. It's an update for council on the impending, impounding and removal of nuisance vehicles within the city. Jeff, this one's you, I believe.
So I just wanted to take an opportunity to brief council on something that we've been working on even before I got here, but definitely in the last year, and that is the removal of nuisance vehicles specifically from private property. We are at the 90% point, 95% point. We're ready to, I want to say ready to start, we're ready to ask council for authorization to begin this process. We expect, we hope to do it in January. Right now, what we're doing is going through the final review of all of those things that were identified, where they are, who they belong to, et cetera, et cetera, and where we've notified, to be sure that, you know, we've met all of our legal requirements, so that when we actually go into the process, when you authorize me to move forward, that you're aware of, well, that you're confident that we have met every legal requirement that we need. So when we come to Dave Bruce's house and tow that vehicle off of his land, he knows what, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, did I say that aloud? I apologize.
That's right. I got some scrap arguing.
Anyway, I will come back to you when we're done with our review, and I hope by mid-January, and ask for your authorization to move ahead on this, on the towing. So subject to your questions, I just want to let you know what was, what was going on with that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate Jeff sending a copy of the policy to Garland. Garland has offered his thoughts on tweaking it a little bit and having two more specific sections, or at least identifying the sections a little better as far as the nuisances, nuisance ordinance and codified law. Thank you, Jeff, for working on that, and it's been something that has been kicked around in public works for quite a while, near and dear to several people's hearts, and we just want to make sure we get this right.
Yes.
Because comparing what we have done in the past, we're certainly going to be taking more aggressive action and expect some pushback, so we want to make sure that we're doing it perfectly. Thank you, Jeff.
Legal.
New business, item G, a possible motion discussion to approve budgeted 2023 cola increase.
Make a motion to approve a budgeted 2023 cola increase of 50 cents an hour for all full-time employees, effective 1-1-23.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item H, a possible motion discussion to approve 2023 hourly rate increase.
Make a possible motion, discussion to approve 2023 hourly rate increase of 85 cents per hour for all part-time and seasonal employees, effective 1-1-23. The amount is equal to the amount of the required state minimum wage increase.
Second.
Discussion.
See if they look at this right, by the summertime, this is more than $200 rates.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item I, a possible motion discussion to renew the following municipal operating agreements.
Let's read this one.
Make the motion to renew the following municipal operating agreement for alcoholic beverages license holders for 2022 American Legion, RL and R&amp;B, B&amp;W Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing business as Yesway, number 1177. PL Big Bats LLC, RB Big Time Pizza Incorporated, RB and R&amp;W, Black Hills Pizza Hut Incorporated, doing business as Hut of Hut Springs, R&amp;B, Buffalo Dreamer Restaurant, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, CS Incorporated, doing business as Winter Circle Lanes and Games Casino, two. RB Buffalo Dreamer, oh, excuse me, hit the wrong line there. Dakota Mark Incorporated, doing business as Dakota Mark Gas, R&amp;B Dakota Incorporated, doing business as Lynx, Dakota, Dakota Mark, PL, Dolgin Midwest LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Family Dollar Stores of South Dakota LLC, doing business as Family, Family Dollar Store, number 27126, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Frankie's Place LLC, R&amp;B and R&amp;L, Frog Projects LLC, doing business as a space, the space, okay, R&amp;W and R&amp;B, Good Karma Couture LLC, doing business as Morning Sunshine, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Hangin' J LLC, doing business as Red Rock River Resort, R&amp;R, HS PLOFT Properties LLC, R&amp;W, R&amp;B, R&amp;R, MG Oil Company, doing business as Corner Pantry, number 11, and number 11B, R&amp;B, Misty River Tavern LLC, RL, Alex and Yvonne Schubert Incorporated, doing business as Sunny Super Foods, PL, CO, HS, Southern Hills Pro Shop, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Southern Hills Mercantile LLC, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Springs Hotel LLC, doing business as Springs Cafe Kiosk, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Dirk and Olga Turnquist, doing business as. and Olga Turnquist, doing business as Springs Restaurant, LLP, R&amp;B and R&amp;W, Stan Wheel LLC, doing business as Riverfront Gallery, R&amp;W and R&amp;B, and Willie's Western Grill, R&amp;L, R&amp;B and R&amp;W.
Second motion.
Anybody buying oxygen?
I missed you got the second because I was so impressed. Thank you.
Did you really read the second sentence?
Should that be for 2023?
Yes, does it say 2022?
Yes.
Yes, it should be 2023, thank you.
Oh, okay.
A lot of people jumped to the second, not so much at the motion.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. Okay.
And that should be for 2023, just for those who are not listening, not 2022.
Now, does that?
So you have to read it?
Read it again.
Does that, does that? I mean, we could change the date on this, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you read it again, Dave?
Sure.
Deb, did you wait till the end, did you wait till the end to say that?
I didn't want to get in his flow.
He was in a roll. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $14,640.81 to the additional sales tax fund professional services 212-21200-42200 for construction administration of the 10-unit teehanger reimbursement revenue received from AIP grant funding number 3-46-0022-015-2021.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this, are we paying for the hangar before it's put up, or?
This is construction administration, we're paying the engineers. They've been having weekly meetings.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K, a possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplements.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $8,086.48 to water fund improvements other than building, 602-43350-43300, and $13,193.74 to the wastewater fund improvements other than building, 604-43250-43300, for the sewer and water main replacement project. Grant reimbursement received from the CDBG grant number 1919-107-05.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. T, am I correct that this is money that we get back for money we had spent as part of the?
The CDBG grant.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item L, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
I make a motion for a discussion to approve the travel training request from the airport manager, Rick Brighton-Bott, to attend the 2023 South Dakota Airports Conference on March 29th and March 30th in Deadwood, South Dakota.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
We have them.
So that brings us to our committee reports. With your agreement, I would like to defer the committee reports, the city administrator report, and the finance officer report to the next council meeting, which gives me an opportunity to talk to you about the information-only inserts that you had in your packet. It's getting late and it's cold out there, so I just want to give you a heads-up of why that's in there. We have been talking about wayfinding. Council, you approved $25,000 to work with ISG to come up with wayfinding, and we have been talking about it in Public Works, and had asked them if they had any changes to what's in front of you. So there's, it would actually be three parts that would be necessary for the wayfinding program. And the first page is actually the ordinance itself. And in talking with the state and being consistent with what we've done with other ordinances, we're taking a little different approach here in trying to keep our ordinances as short as possible, so that when we go to change them, it doesn't cost us as much with the folks that we partner with to do that. And the ordinance actually makes reference to the policy, and that starts on the back page, page number two through page number three and four. And it's actually, in that policy, that we define how we're going to implement a wayfinding and sign policy. Talks about the definitions that are used throughout it. We make reference to South Dakota codified law. South Dakota codified law says that on a state highway, we can't, businesses, commercial businesses aren't allowed to be on the signs. So we've addressed how we would do that with private businesses. A private business can have a sign on a city street, so it's all of those types of things that are in here. We identify what it would take to be a primary destination, public destinations, and then a destination list, and talk about private sign eligibility. And then the last part, so you would, we need to approve the policy first, because the ordinance would then refer to the policy. So the last two pages are the form, is the form that would be required for us to fill out with the state. And it's looking to what is the policy, what is the ordinance, and where do we want to have all of the signs? So in my mind, before we actually get into what the signs are going to look like, we need to know where we're going to place the signs. So what I would ask is for you to take a look at this, send me any changes you'd like to have to it, so that we can get this in front of you to get these approved, the policy itself, and then get the ordinance approved, so we can get that back to ISG and say, okay, here's what we've settled on as far as the locations. And then, once we've done that, then we can begin working with ISG and some of our local folks to figure out what we want the signs to look like. Take a look at them, let me know what you would like to see changed, and I'll do my best to get this policy and the ordinance in front of you. Any questions? All right, that brings us to a motion to adjourn.
I have one comment. I have to, a comment on committee reports, just a heads-up that park planning and zoning was supposed to meet this Wednesday, and that has been canceled. So if you were planning on coming, nobody will be there.
All right, again, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Quick. No, I second all of them. Discussion?
Oh, did you second it already?
Oh, you did?
He did.
Oh, I heard you.
I was just louder.
No, I'm supposed to second.
You made the most.
It was supposed to be me.
But, but did you?
No.
Okay, then she did.
I, I, the next meeting will be January 2nd?
Third.
Third.
The second is the observed holiday for New Year's.
That's why I was asking.
The next meeting will be the third.
Lead.
I plead the fifth.
They don't want a fifth.
So are we all confused yet?
They don't want to leave. All in favor? All right. So Craig making the motion, Linda is the second.
Got it. Yeah.
Discussion? You seem to have a lot to say. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
And have a Merry Christmas!
Yes.
Everybody have a Merry Christmas.